... Planning Commission meeting for the 15th of October, Tuesday, 2019, 7:00 now. We have a call in present, I believe, so let's go ahead and call the meeting order. As always, please join me in paying our respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you very much. All right, Madam Secretary, I always like to, after paying our respects to the flags, have a roll call conducted, so if you would kindly call the names of each commissioner and we'll see who is present.
Okay. Ballard, Cook, here. Curtis.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Pelman, here. Pyle, here. Bean, here.
All right. Justin, Commissioner Ballard is not present this evening. Has anyone heard from him as to his intentions for this evening? Did he email a message to the village? I did not hear from him. Maybe he'll walk through that door any minute, but for right now, Justin has an excused absence. It's not a big issue, but it is something to note in record. All right. We have an agenda before us tonight. I would like to make one change to this agenda. I would like, under Old Business, Item 8A, I would like that to be Item B, and under A, I would like to have a report from Kelsey Cook offered. She's been doing some research on the side and she has something to report to us, and I'm anxious to hear that. So I'd like to make that Item A, and then Item B be recreational marijuana. So that's said.
With those changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for October 15, 2019, for the Planning Commission, for the Village of Oxford.
Correct. I appreciate that. All right, Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the table with a second. I would ask all those in favor of that agenda to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. That motion carries. We have approved the agenda for this evening, and I thank you very much for your cooperation. We move on to Item 5, where we look at the minutes from our previous meeting dated 17 of September in 2019. You have those minutes in front of you, and I've assumed that you've had an opportunity to review them. I would entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 17, 2019, for the Village of Oxford Planning Commission.
Second, ma'am.
All right, Madam Secretary, once again, I have a motion on the table to approve the minutes from the September 17, 2019, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. I also have a second for that motion. Without further discussion, all those in favor of adopting the previous minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. That motion carries as well. We have approved agenda and approved minutes. Now, Madam Secretary, at Item 6 of our approved agenda, typically, we always take space for correspondence that might have been sent to the Planning Commission between now and our previous meeting. And so at this point, you would tell me whether or not you have received any specific correspondence outside of our ordinary business conduct.
Not at all.
And so no members of the community, or et cetera, et cetera, have sent contacts. And so what we do is we approve that, we accept it, we file it. But if we don't have anything, we'll skip over that. So thank you very much for that. All right. No public hearing tonight because we're just conducting regular business. And now we move on to Item 8. So as we talked about, I have a new Item 8 under Old Business. Kelsey, I apologize for putting you on Old Business, because it's really not Old Business, but to a certain extent it is, because it has to do with marijuana, adult-use marijuana ordinances that we've been working on. So I thank you very much for that email today, and I also thank you very much for the effort that you put into this. And frankly, I'm anxious to hear what you have to say. Turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, I mentioned that I work with those doing the Michigan Municipal League, just my everyday job, so I know that they're pretty on top of the adult-use marijuana ordinances and what different communities around the state are doing. So I spoke to Jennifer Regterink. She's kind of their go-to person for this topic. She's a Legislative Associate of State Affairs at Michigan Municipal League. And she gave me as much information as she has, and then pointed me in the direction of MML's website for some further resources, which I'll kind of explain what's there. So she said that, obviously, they don't know much about how communities are going to be impacted yet because the state, well, you can't apply for a license until November 1st. So it's kind of wait and see what happens. And, you know, kind of as we all know, a lot of the decisions that communities make in regards to their ordinances are really going to be determined whether they were good decisions or decisions needing work once things start happening, and a lot of it's going to be worked out in the courts. And that's kind of what the different municipal attorneys and communities that she hears from are saying, and that's what a lot of the council for MML says as well. And I think he moderated our town hall, Chris Johnson, he did say that, and so she echoed that as well. But some of the things she is hearing is that it's important, she believes, for all communities to have some kind of minimum regulations in place, so what we're doing is great, even those communities who want to opt out for an extended, a longer period of time, or don't have a specific deadline when they might want to put such an ordinance in place, just because of the risk of a referendum where the opt-out could be overturned by a vote of the people. And so I think that's really important, that, you know, no matter what council decides, it'll be good to have something ready to go. She said that one of the risks that she's hearing about is picking and choosing which license types to allow. She believes it's a risk to do that because the medical marijuana rules and law specifically allow for you to pick and choose, but as you know, as Mario's pointing out, these rules are silent on that, so it leaves room for a legal challenge, whether you can actually do that, because if you couldn't, why don't the rules say that, the medical ones do?
And we've chosen not to do that.
Right, and we've chosen.
For the most part.
So I think so we've swept them all into the ordinance. Yeah, so I think that's smart, and she agreed that's a good thing as well. She said another issue, which we've kind of discussed too, is, you know, limiting the number of facilities strictly by number, which is a risk, because it is, could be seen as arbitrary, and you need a good reason, and if you're just picking a number, which some communities have done in the ordinances that they're adopting, the risk is there. So I mentioned to her, we were considering having some buffer zones, and, you know, limiting to a certain area, and she thought that that was a good idea, based on the feedback that she's gotten. So I think so far, it sounds like we're kind of moving in the right direction in all aspects, as far as the number and the type. She said that another, and I don't know if this would pertain to Planning Commission zoning, or if it'd be more of a council issue, but figuring out the selection process for the applicants that apply at the local municipality. She said the rules place this burden on the locals, so, you know, as far as like who does left and in what order. She said, you know, you can, for example, you can simply say first come, first served, and maybe the clerk would determine that by a time and date stamp filed, you know, at the village office, but then is it literally first come, first served, or first come, first served, who actually meets all the requirements? So something to consider, like those very small nuances could make a difference and could leave room for legal risk and potential liability.
I think that's a very important point, and let's come back to that when we begin our discussion under Item B in our discussion all night.
And then finally, she said, you know, any of us, and I, can certainly follow up with her and continue to keep in contact with her as time goes on, and as November 1st passes, and kind of just see what's going on. She would also like us to let her know what we're doing, because she's trying to track across the state what's going on. So on Michigan Municipal League's website, which is mml.org, they have a resources page, and then there's a tab where, and it's actually under medical marijuana, but that's just, for some reason, where all their marijuana resources are listed. But if you go there, and I can send a link out.
Please.
There is a lot of information on adult-use marijuana. There are several opt-out ordinances. There are a couple, they're listed under a category called act-in, but it's really just allowing. And one of them is Manistee, and, oh gosh, another one is another northern Michigan town, forgive me, I can't think of it right now. But I looked through their ordinances as well, and I don't believe they're specifically zoning ordinances. They include a lot more, but they have zoning aspects to them that we could look at, and Mario may have already seen them, as far as how they're written. They include a lot of the same information we have, though, so that's good. Some of them are just, they chose them different routes to go, so it's interesting to see. And then on the same page, there's different, like tables, and just kind of FAQ, and then they've done several podcasts, and kind of like webinars on the rules, and so I watched those, and they're pretty helpful as well. So just a good resource to have.
So do you think we're on the right track?
I do, yeah.
That's always the point.
Yes. Based on talking to her, I think we're making good decisions for the village, recommend a council, I think we're on the right track. I think looking at the two act-in ordinances on there would be helpful, just to see how they differ from ours, if we want to pick up anything from theirs that we missed. I didn't get a chance yet to kind of go through and look at that, but once we have ours done, it might be something that, you know, we could kind of take a look and just compare and see if we didn't think of something, so.
So these communities have their ordinances posted online through their websites, and Michigan Municipal League then just puts links on their page to those ordinances, is that correct?
The links actually go directly to a PDF of the ordinance, so it's as if they send the ordinance to.
That was really my question, is that once we have an ordinance in place, and if the village council adopts it, would it be appropriate, and I ask this to the commission, would it be appropriate for us to forward a copy, PDF copy of that document to them so that they could use our ordinance also as a guideline? You know, if we could be of assistance to other communities that are trying to wade their way through this, it would be helpful to them, I think, to be able to see an example of an ordinance created by a community who's done it successfully, like us.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I think the more ordinance that looks similar.
Sure.
The better, because then in court, they're not going to be torn apart against each other.
Agreed, agreed. Now, what was this person's name, Kelsey, writing?
Jennifer Regterink. Last name is R-E-G-T-E-R-I-N-K.
Okay. Excellent.
You know who else is a huge resource for this? And they're local people, Dimakis, Justin, ex-Dimakis Consulting, right down the road from here.
He's been here.
Yeah, we've had him onboard a couple of times, so we're familiar with him.
You know, they can give you some great ideas for ordinances and stuff like that. Other thing to remember is community give-back in your ordinance. Like, you can press these businesses for community give-back, in like real numbers. Like, if you got one, a couple hundred thousand dollars in community give-back, make that part of your application or your ordinance.
In my experience, the state statute specifically limits what the municipality can and can't request. I mean, there's community benefit agreements, but usually, there has to be some kind of barometer for that.
Right.
In order to, some threshold met by the property or the application in order to get to the level of need for them, because if not, then you can be deemed as choosing, why is this use being requested, have a community give-back, when we have all these other special uses that aren't treated the same? So it's equal, and it could be a violation of equal protection. I mean, I'm not a attorney.
Yeah, it's a unique business, and what people don't realize, like, we've done some pretty big projects in the cannabis industry, so it's like the city of Asser. Like, if you have an auto repair shop, you come to town, and you, you know, you get a CMO, and you do business. The cannabis industry isn't like that, because it's such a new industry, whether it's right or wrong. Like, Pontiac is, I can get you the community to give back, and it's going to be linked, because the first cities who did it had community give-back. Well, people made all these crazy promises, but they didn't follow through on the promises. Well, Pontiac, it's got a community give-back that's tied, it's tied to the property. So say you do a hundred thousand dollar community give-back, the next year, where you, you know, if you didn't do your community give-back, they, one, they can lien your property, or they cannot, you know, because you have to renew your license every year.
That sounds basically illegal.
No, no.
I'm not saying they're not doing it, it just doesn't sound right.
The municipalities are doing it. I mean, they're doing it.
I can believe municipalities are doing it, and I think that they might be under, opening themselves up very easily and quickly to lawsuits.
All right, first off, tell me your name.
Oh, Mike Fly.
And Mike, who do you represent?
Um, we're just developers. I live in Oxford. I live in Oxford, so I follow these communities all the time, all throughout the state of Michigan.
All right.
So I'm an independent guy. I mean, how I started following, I started following out of property, and I do, you know, commercial small plowing, and I've been in the bolt storage business forever. So around 2010, 2011, I was did business in Converse Township. So, and I think it was 10 or 11, they had an ordinance there that you could do, carry your lot for cannabis. And so I watched all the rent raise up, where I couldn't afford a rent, and then I'd tow it. I would say to Tom's ordinance, I'd go, huh, you're saying, like, I can't start bullets with my parking lot, but the guy next door can hopefully go cannabis? And Tom would say, well, he followed up his ordinance, and the next thing you know, rent would be, you know, say, we're bringing six houses for two houses, and it was 12 to 14 houses. Like, if you wanted development, cannabis is going to bring development to your community. So that's how I started following the land, like, the city of Aurora, you know, when the economy was horrible in '12 and '10, that city, that city in Colorado. You know, those were, you know, going into foreclosure and stuff like that, and they will open the doors to the cannabis industry, and.
All right, Mike, I want to thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, you put me in an awkward spot, okay, because it's not a closed meeting, and you're welcome as a guest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But having you contribute is, I'm not really sure exactly how to do that, because we meet on the second, second meeting of the month in here, because we've been working on developing an ordinance for the village council.
Yes.
To govern businesses that want to conduct adult-use marijuana in the village. And so we've been on a strict schedule to get that done within a 12-month period.
You guys are doing awesome.
We're coming up on that.
Yes.
And so I can't be too much diverted by things that are off-topic, and I apologize, because I'm always anxious to hear from the community, and you're a part of that, and so you're welcome here. Please don't misunderstand at all.
Oh, no.
But I can't let you go off the rails too much.
Okay.
Because, and so you're welcome, if there's something that you want to contribute, please just let me know, and if it's pertinent, please feel free to object, because obviously, you have a great deal of experience in this.
Awesome.
And we're happy to hear it, but I can't, I can't let you hijack the meeting. I understand my meaning. I don't mean any of that.
I understand, but I just thought you'd call.
Of course, you're very welcome, and I'm glad to have you here. And you've signed my visitor sheet, so I appreciate that. Commissioner Leslie?
I simply wanted to make a statement, same thing, that I think the proper place for him to make his comments is under public comment.
I agree, and I agree, and I, you know, you're never really sure how far that's going to go, and I don't want to be rude, Mike, it's not my intention to be rude, but I do have a protocol that you have to follow. So Leslie, thank you very much for reminding me about my responsibility, we'll stay on it. Kelsey, is there anything else that you would like to, pardon, add to your report?
No, I was asking.
Now, commissioners, are there any questions you would like to add? Ask Kelsey about what she presented.
For clarification, you didn't see anything, thought we should take a closer look at, except to make sure in the selection process that we have that clarified as best as we can.
I guess what I would like to do, if you think it's worth it, is go through the couple that are posted on MML's website, and kind of pull out things that maybe we should consider. I don't want to belabor the process, because we've gotten so far, but both of the ones I saw on there just have, for each type of facility, they have specific rules. I just don't, I personally don't know if it's zoning, or if it's something more, and so I have to defer to Mario. It almost to me seems like when we take our zoning ordinance to council, then they're going to have to come up with a much larger ordinance, and stick, you know, this will be in the zoning code, but they're going to have, the village is going to have its own ordinance, totally separate, so there's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done.
Did you make copies of the ones that were online?
No, but I can't.
Well, maybe for the next meeting.
Yeah.
We can have copies. Then the council's going to have to sit down, we've got to do the application, we've got to make the application, and they're going to have to figure out the application, who are we going to, first come, first served? Are we taking them alphabetically? What are we doing? Do they have to own the property first? You know, what are our requirements going to be? You want to apply, do you have to have a purchase agreement in, or something? And that's something that, I don't know, that Planning Commission definitely talk about, and the council's going to definitely have to talk about it.
Do you think the council would have to approve what we've drawn up before we go into that administrative, you know, functional forms and paperwork stuff?
Not necessarily first. I've been sending them, they're pretty much up to date on everything we've done, and forwarding the ordinance to them. They haven't seen them, they have, although I described the property to them, but there's just, and I'm not sure what Bob is seeing. I'm sure Bob has seen it, I haven't heard any back feed from Bob, though, so I'm sure Bob's going to make a huge opinion, so.
All right. Jack, any questions?
No.
Rose?
Forward his response at all?
No, I don't believe so, not yet. I think we had agreed, or at least we had discussed the idea very early on of getting something complete before we sent it to him for his evaluation. All right, Kelsey, are you done?
Yeah, so just so I'm clear, for the next meeting, I can absolutely print the ordinance, so that we all have them, and then we can kind of go through. Do you want me to start pulling stuff out, or would you rather do that as a group? I mean, or do you want me to kind of work with Mario in the meantime, to see what is something we're working on now, and what should be included in a larger ordinance, so that way, I just want to make sure I'm going in the right direction.
I understand, yeah, because I don't want to waste your time.
Or anyone else.
And it sounds to me like it could be a very time-consuming process. How familiar are you with the specific details of what Leslie, or I'm sorry, Kelsey is referring to?
I'm definitely familiar with all the different resources that different organizations provide. Having looked at those ordinances specifically, but definitely more and more are going to come out, and more and more are being adopted. So it doesn't hurt to take a look at some and see what they, any kind of topics they address, and we might not. So it's something where, like, I can take a look at those, and then in the next packet, I can include those ordinances, and then like a bulleted list of my just cursory review of it, and then you guys can look at it and see what you, if you find other items that you find, pointed out that you wanted to talk about.
You know, because I, I'm afraid that this is a swamp, and that it would very, it would be very easy for us all to get bogged down in this, because my guess is there's a lot of information there. And I'm anxious to extract things that are very pertinent and helpful over and above what we have already.
I was going to say, doesn't Mario have 99% of this stuff?
Well, that's, that's what I thought, Jack. I mean, I think that we've done a really good job of covering everything. If there was something stellar out there that, when you read it, you say, wow, why didn't we think of that? Or what a great idea? Certainly, I would adopt it, or at least request it to be adopted, or at least can be considered, because I don't want to turn a blind eye to the good sense that's out there, the people that are doing it, but I also don't want to get bogged down in that, because, you know, a thorough review of all that information can be very time-consuming for especially all of us, I know for you, certainly for you to a certain extent. So if there was some way to distill from all that information, best practices, or key points, or things that are really stellar, that are outside of what we've already considered, I think that would be most helpful.
Didn't you do that, address that, here, Mario?
Yeah, basically, we need to start it off by, I took a look at other existing mental marijuana ordinances that I'm familiar with, and then done that. But I think one thing we could do, just, that way to resource it out there, is we could, because I figure that once we, maybe after this version, based on your comments tonight, maybe if we start a review process and do a two-track system, one where Bob officially has it, he has looked at it in kind of cursory, and I have asked him a couple of questions here and there, pointing out some, some issues that we do want you to, him to address specifically, and so he's aware of it. But I think if we maybe try and target his review, and then possibly this kind of review, like a peer review process possibly, and do it at the same time, so at the, at the next meeting maybe even, have Bob's comments, have like a peer review type comment, and then see, then you can make the decision as where you want to go, and be like, well, this is all great, and we have to do this, or Bob says we have to do this and that definitely, and then get it out there. Because I think that's, honestly, that's a little bit more involved than we usually do before we get public opinion, because I think that's the next step, too, is having a draft that's complete, that'll get to all the public, can officially come and have all their comments and everything. Because chances are, I mean, you know, we just don't know. It's always an interesting thing with the public comment. Sometimes when you're very confident about crafting ordinance, tons of comments, and others when you're not sure, nobody shows up. So I think, I think we're at the point where after your, after these next set of reviews, it's okay to start doing some kind of input. So having, so possibly even scheduling a public hearing as well in December, too, but it's up to you guys.
Ms. Leslie?
I just want to clarify that my trust in Mario's judgment and Kelsey's review of, and her report, I think it's, to make the best use of Mario's broad understanding, he's looked at lots of ordinances, he's worked this through. I think if Mario takes a look at some of these sample ordinances and derives any recommendations, that is doing that first kind of distilling, I think is the word to use. And I trust his judgment on that.
You do.
Because he works in the field.
Sure.
And plus, it would, I think, keep us consistent. We've been working with him all along, where he thinks about things, and he knows where we're at. I suggest that for time reasons, plus expertise, we, we let Mario do that first appearance, but I agree, it would be nice to see the current language, you know, that you think we should see to review your review.
Okay. Jack?
I thought us reviewing this with the blue changes tonight, this was going to be attorney.
We were done.
Yeah. Now, what Kelsey's gone through and read, Mario's group, I'm sure that the other plans are saying stuff, if he should make a review of what they've got, just to make sure we've got it all, I thought this was done.
And I think that, I would venture to say, if you told the commission that's exactly whatever it was.
So when does Bob Davis give the look at this and make comment?
I would guess after tonight.
Okay. Because the next.
My expectation, I mean, that's, that's for us to determine, I think, but once we get to Mario's presentation, I think that what's next is going to be one of the prime topics that I want to hear about.
And it should be ready for the next Planning Commission meeting, Bob's review.
Sure.
And Mario's final documents. Am I wrong, or?
No, I know, I think that's very reasonable to expect. Kelsey, I know you have a point you want to make. I just want to ask a question about Jennifer. And because I want everybody to understand, I'm not trying to muddy the waters with this. You know, I'm, I'm not trying to muddy the waters, and I don't want to make this more complicated than it is. Kelsey was good enough to bring us some information that I thought was worthy of our hearing, okay? Obviously, in wanting to create the best ordinance that we can, I'd like to ensure that it is complete as possible and incorporates all the best practices that are out there, at least as many as we can identify. And if there was something that we were missing, I would want somebody to tell me now rather than later. Because once the council votes on this and makes it an ordinance, is, you know, it's like, okay, well, now let's start on round two, right? And it would be great if we could have everything that we wanted in round one, okay? So does Jennifer and/or her team provide any evaluation services for our draft ordinance as to, to venture an opinion in that regard? Did they say, you guys are missing a really important point, or they would say, this is the best ordinance we've seen yet?
I don't know if they would give an official opinion. I don't know if the villages' members, I mean, I don't know if they have an MML membership or not.
We do.
Okay. So they need to give us some guidance. I know when I spoke to Jennifer, she kept referring to, you know, our general council thinks that's, or municipal lawyers, I've talked to things that, so it seems like each community really is advised, obviously, by their municipal lawyers, and she's just gathering the information and sharing it, so.
Do you have a preference on what you would request moving forward?
So I agree with everything that everyone said, and I think it'd be great if Mario just skims over the two that are on MML's website, because we have them. And I just wanted to point out that, and kind of reinforce, everything I saw in the ordinances is everything we have here except for two things, and that is just where they really, each one has expanded a lot on facilities, like they've gotten, I don't know if it's necessary, they've gotten into details, like if you're going to be a processor, you need a building that is this many square feet, you know, things like that, but I think that's And that is just where they really, each one has expanded a lot on facilities, like they've gotten, I don't know if it's necessary, they've gotten into details, like if you're going to be a processor, you need a building that is this many square feet, you know, things like that. I think that's too detailed. You don't need it.
I don't need to control that.
Right. And so the other thing that's different was just the, this may be something that Mario could easily add, is just, they had like a detailed application process. So, you know, when someone shows up at a lot, what are the steps that are going to go through and who does what, you know? And I think that's, if we can, my thought was if we had something like that, then this is absolutely complete. I just wasn't sure if that was part of this ordinance or that.
That's a good point. It ties in with what Mo brought up. And I want to check, table that for just a moment, because it's one of the things I'm going to ask this guy next to me about. And because if we have a document that we're satisfied with now in what it entails, I want to know what's our next step? What's our next couple of steps? What do we have to do now? And so Mario, that's one of the things I'm going to ask you for when we go to part B. I just want you, I want to make sure that you don't feel like you're being ignored because that's not the case, I don't believe. And I, like I said, I don't want to sidetrack us or derail our effort. But I do want to make sure that we're gathering as much of the state of the art as we can. And I'm willing to take a short delay in order to make that verification. Mario, if you'd be kind enough to review a couple of the documents, if you'd be kind enough to send Mario a link to the things that you found, I would just ask you to skim it for something that we might not have seen. And if you don't see anything, that is, yeah, we got that covered, yeah, we got that covered, don't worry. There's no reason to make a change. More importantly, I want to bring up the topic that both of these talked about tonight as to what are our next steps? And most importantly, what if any of that needs to go into this document? Okay? And so, because the document could easily just stand in and of itself with nothing else about it, but how the processes work is just as important. And how does that get eliminated? How, where do responsibilities fall, et cetera, et cetera. Kelsey? Thank you very much. I appreciate your effort, and I appreciate you taking that upon yourself to go get some information. Any other questions for Kelsey in regards to her presentation? All right, good. I'm going to call it done. We're going to move on to part B, which is recreational marijuana or adult usage of marijuana discussion. And Mario, with that, I will turn that over to you. However, I would like to remind you that I have a very certain focus on what I would like to cover in this as well. So you can take, you know, the floor as you see fit, but at some point, I want to turn the discussion to how do we proceed?
Yes.
And I thank you.
First off, as always, as I'm going through just the changes from the last meeting, if you see, if you have any questions or concerns or topics you want to talk, address, you know, just speak them out, point them out, those into those issues. So basically, this is just a revised version based on our September comments. So just jumping right into page one of the actual ordinance. First thing I included was under the definition for marijuana, I thought that was the best place at the moment, was to reiterate what we've been saying by, and by utilization of our use of the spelling of the word marijuana with a J. So I included that next, that one sentence or two at the end, to specifically let everyone know that, you know, within the Village of Oxford, the term is defined as M-A-R-I-J-U-A-N-A. And shall be referred to in referencing term, in referencing this to term that is spelled with the H by the state at Lara and the state statutes.
Stupid stink. So. All right. Thank you for that, Mario. I truly appreciate that.
And that is one of the issues that I pointed out, so to Bob, when he does officially do your review, to provide his opinion on if that's adequate. Number one, if that's adequate language to begin with, to cover us and make sure that it's appropriate, and then, well, and then also make sure it's appropriate. I did catch my spelling, then similar, I catch my spelling error in number five, where I used the H-word, for lack of a better description. Moving on, I added just a couple of other paragraphs. Moving over to paragraph B, sub-paragraph three, I just wanted, I just added under other marijuana facilities prohibited, I specified both facility or event. Because one of the other new types of uses allowed under the emergency rules from Lara, or MRA I should say, is the temporary marijuana event. And right now, it's not listed specifically.
Correct.
And I just think that's probably for the best at the moment because it's, that is definitely the least specific when it comes to any type of rules or regulations from MRA. And since, actually, I don't know if you've noticed, in the state, but there actually have already been some held in other locations. And some of them, as far as I know, went off perfectly fine, and some of them were, had issues of their own, based on the size, based on, based on the lack of procedures and that sort of thing. So I think first for the moment, we want, focusing on the facilities is appropriate. And because that's something that I think if MRA, basically, it's, once again, it's a lot.
Sure. And I know we've talked about that in the past, Mario, and I think that we all agreed previously that that was inappropriate. Not omission, but deletion.
Moving on to paragraph C, in terms of location, for the childcare facilities, it was revised to go to 500 feet for both the childcare, licensed daycare, and for the actual facilities through either public schools or private schools, or those receiving school aid as listed there with the state statutes. And that's based on our discussion from last meeting to last meeting, and the ability to make sure we're not blanking there, with too much of a buffer here. Public parks, next paragraph, we just, rather than call out specifics at 10 in our scripture, we just indicated any public park. And actually, I think that is a good point, because if there are any public parks created in the future, that would also provide that protection. But then, most importantly, getting down to paragraph four, impermitted districts, we did, I did eliminate the previous paragraph that was allowing you to commercial and focusing it completely on the industrial district. And then I also broadened it as directed to make sure that it includes parcels that front on Glassby Street, Industrial Drive, ordering a road right-of-way line, and are located in the I-1. So that basically covers every piece of property that's zone I-1 on the southeast, southeast corners of the village. Yes, Mark?
In the public parks buffer, you missed the web feed after the...
Ah, there it is. Missing what?
500.
Just says...
At least 500.
From.
All right, thank you.
I want to.
That's right.
And so with that, I have a question, Mario.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think we've probably addressed this, but I just want to be clear on this. We make a provision for someone to come in and purchase property and be state-licensed and come to us and say, I want to stack licenses here. I want to have, on this property, I want to have multiple, I want to have, I want to be a grower, micro-business, and a processor, and a retailer. Here's my licenses, bang, 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 bang. None of these buffer zones apply to that particular plot.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be illegal, illegal use of someone's property if that's what they, and we're not too tightly regulating how that works inside his property.
I don't understand the question.
Basically, he's concerned that if, for example, someone has a license for a grower, then the buffer doesn't grow around the growing facility, and then therefore, they have to be 500 feet away from another processing portion of their business.
That means stacking. Yeah. It says that the facility must be located at least 500 feet from another marijuana facility.
Oh, okay.
So I've got one lot with three buildings on it.
Okay.
And I want to, I want to stack licenses on this property. I want to have a retailer, I want a grower, a micro-business, I want to be a processor and out front, I want a little storefront. I'm going to have five licenses. I'm doing everything. It's a vertically-integrated business, very successful business format. I want to make sure that that concept is in conformance with how you've spelled out. And is there any ambiguity in there? Is there anybody who's going to say, well, but, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, you can't do that? Because my, I think our, I shouldn't say my, but our intent was that the concept of stacking would be allowed. We've talked about stacking in the past. And so that that would be acceptable as long as our verbiage here doesn't prevent it. And that's why I asked the question. That's my question.
So two ways to, that we address that. One is if someone came to me in the, part of the application process and said, here's my facility, by the way, I'm going to have these stacked, these stacked licenses. And then the next person lines up, whoa, 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 I'm going to challenge him because he's got three light, three facilities on the same lot. Number one, I'll say, well, he's not, he's not just a facility. Under paragraph B two, we need him in permitted shared facility. So as long as all of his grower, his processor, and his retailer are located in the same building, then that's classified in the village as a shared stacked facility. Number one.
Shared use of permitted.
Permitted, yeah. And then, two, the buffer itself specifically says, all lots containing marijuana, must be located at least 500 feet from any, and probably, this would be a way to clarify it, from any other lot containing marijuana facility. So therefore, then the application, the buffer is actually applied to the lots.
Then Mario, let's go back to B two, because I thank you very much for bringing that to my attention. I have a lot with three buildings on it. All of this stacked license that are not contained is in the same building. And it says, in the same building, in B two. So does that need to be referenced in, on the same lot?
Well, I think that's up to you then, because in my experience, the way it's been worked in the past with the medical marijuana facilities, they prefer and it's easier to have them all located in the same facility. Because then, when it comes to transporting product from like a grower to a processor, and forgive me, I just don't know exactly, but I've heard that there's specific requirements to transport it. They can't just take the product out of the grow, and then just walk across the parking lot. I don't think, you would think it could, but I, but, so that's why typically, every facility that I've seen so far is self-contained. And the one caveat to that, which does seem kind of odd, is that the state does require for medical marijuana facilities, the, they are the ones actually that get into specifically the hallway widths and areas and doors, number of doors and exits. And they, oh yeah, they get into all the minutia, which is why we don't have to, because we don't want to say doors need to be 32 inches from another door, and then they say, the state says, well, state says I have to be 30, 30. So, you know, which one? We don't need to get in that minutia, because the state, once again, is regulating that specificity. We're dealing with the use and the facility itself. So, no, no, no question.
So are you saying that for that kind of specific application of the law, really the licensure process is going to take care of a lot of those?
Correct.
Before they...
Yeah. It's similar, right. Because it's similar to, for example, restaurants. Like restaurants, they have to meet all the health code requirements, they have to have, whether they have to have a sink or what type of sink, like a three-wash sink or whatever it is. Those can change, because those, what you want to have happen is to have an department have the learned best practices, say, oh, we used to require this, now we require that. Well, in theory, as more facilities, marijuana facilities are created, and as best practices come into play, they'll revise their rules. So we don't want to have to go back and change our ordinance every time they change the rule that says this or that. Because one curious thing I just learned was that when it comes to a processor, in, based on the definition and what typically has been done with medical marijuana for processing, is the idea that it's for taking the product and then converting it into oils or into edibles or that sort of thing. That's the process. It's much of a, you know, new, or whatever you want to say. I am, I wasn't, I thought processing was just, well, don't they just, that's where you take the plant and cut it up and do what you got to do to make it so you can actually smoke it? And according to this, at least this one applicant, not from the state, they were saying, well, no, the grow, inside the grow facility, you can prepare the plant so it becomes that product that's like just, I don't know if they call that raw or whatever, but whatever's in the glass jars that they sell, that can just be smoked directly. So, so that's going to be a quirk in terms of processing, because some communities require the processing in order to get other licenses. So anyway, it's a long way of saying, we do want to rely on the state in terms of their expertise for those kind of specificities. So when it comes to your original question of, you know, multiple buildings, it, I still think that's up to you guys. Because if you see that, the better do that, if they want it, if they want to fully utilize all those buildings, not having to tear one down and move one over, like 10 feet or whatever they need to do, that's a possibility. I would just say then, we could say, be located in multiple facilities, provided there in keeping with all state medical marijuana, adult use requirements. So we could do that. I don't know, to me, from a security standpoint, I think it'd just be easier to have one site, one building be secure rather than multiple. But that might just be a, that's just a layperson's opinion. Maybe that's a specific opinion for the, maybe we also need the police chief to take a look at this ordinance.
I was actually, I was the way it was to Gary Adams. I guess the only, the only one question is, if we actually had a grower, which we actually have the property being... I don't know, because you, if you have your big grow facility and your property, and you want to have a dispenser on that property, you might not want it in the same building.
Well, that's the way they would actually be doing it for all the medical. But once again, it's because the state then requires separate entrances, separate wall, I mean, the walls, and so it's completely wall-up. And actually, at least in terms of the medical facilities, they actually have, you have, doors are secure, obviously, they usually almost always have a guard posted at the entrance door. You go in to a general common area, and then there, some of them have separate waiting rooms for the, for the patients. And then, they actually go through another door, they get taken into the actual room where they choose their medicine. So, so they have that specifically laid out, and then, and then they have a specific exit to get back out to the parking lot. Because they do want everything separated. So at least right now, that's why, the one building is the benefit to me. But, you know, if you wanted to have a multiple.
So do we need to address that at this level, at this stage? Or can we wait until the unique situation may arise where someone has a study with more than one building, and then address it at that time?
Well, at this time, it could probably be best, if you wanted, because basically, if someone comes in and they say, I have two buildings, I don't want to have to spend the money to combine them or tear one down, then you would have to amend that section. Because right now, it says one building.
See, in section, in section B two, you could say, operate in the same building or buildings housing another permitted marijuana facility. And so you allow for the potential of a lot containing multiple buildings, which are not subjected to this 500-foot buffer zone. Do you agree or not agree, Leslie?
Especially in this too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have contact, as long as that is clear that we're talking about on the same lot.
Right.
Well, that's what I, I had language in there, says, any marijuana facility may be allowed to operate on the same lot housing, well, let's see.
So I think B two's language should be, should sync with C three's language.
Right.
So that they're comparable. That's all I...
Mm-hmm. Jack, do you have any thoughts on this?
Just as long as you can have multiple on one in multiple buildings. You're claiming it to the lot, not the building.
Correct.
Right. If you, I don't care if you have one or 20, 13.
Yeah.
The next one has to be so far away from the other one. Correct?
Separate property.
The property lines.
Right. Yeah, you can have multiple lots in I-1, but they have to be at least 500 feet from each other.
Now, was it 500 or 250?
Well, we'll get to that question in a second.
Right now, it says 500, so. All right.
So if you would, Mario.
I would like you to craft B two to incorporate the idea of multiple buildings on the same lot would be acceptable for stack licenses, however you see to word that. I agree with you in answer to Leslie's question, is that if this, Leslie, if this comes up later as an issue, it'll... for stacked licenses, however you see to word that. I, I agree with you in answer to Leslie's question, is that if this, Leslie, if this comes up later as an issue, it'll take us too long to fix this.
Okay.
I'd rather have it be fixed now, before it's law. And if we can, you know, it may never even arise. And if that's the case, I'll be just as happy as can be. But if it does arise, now we got, you know, three months to fix it, and four persons waiting, trying to get a business going, so... If you can craft that, Mario, I'm sure that we'll be fine with it. All right, please continue.
One other thing, sorry, just to reconcile B2 with C3, could we make sure that in C3, there's some language that says something about, except for as, you know, permitted shared facilities in B2, or something like that? Just to make sure it's clear, that would help too, along with the language that you suggested. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good, Kelsey, thank you very much. All right, any other comments in regards to this? Jack? Okay, Mario, please continue.
Okay, so, uh, next topic. I apologize, number one. My mapping expert ran into some issues, and so that's why I don't have any maps in front of you for taking a look at this number requirement for the marijuana facilities buffer. However, I did look at the maps. And so, right now, based on the current lot configuration we have in the industrial zone, with a five-hundred-foot buffer, you can, you'd be looking at three locations, based on the current lot configurations, that a facility could be located on. Possibly four, if the facility on a drainer went through a lot split, I mean, they'd have to tear down this build, apartment buildings, that sort of thing. So with five hundred feet, you're looking at three, possibly four. For two hundred and fifty-foot buffer separation, we wanted to shrink it, you're looking at a total of possibly six, six sites within the area, possibly up to seven, once again allowing for potential lot splits.
I thought we looked at those lot widths and said that we went down to two fifty would be a better...
Right, so I just wanted to give you the quantity, because yeah, with two fifty, you get six potential sites. And then with one hundred, uh, and I was just doing this for, you know, frame of reference for the other side. Actually, because of leaving the current lot configuration lot and the buildings on the sites, this path of least resistance is what I was trying to get at. You're looking at eight, possibly nine, facilities within, within the industrial area. Now, the issue with that, with eight-one hundred, is that there's gonna be a lot more probability of people trying to tear down some of the smaller buildings and redo it, uh, excuse me, tear down some of the smaller buildings, reconfigure the lot widths to, to allow for their, um, potential site. The one thing I will say when it comes to these issues is, um, I still think having some kind of buffer is appropriate, because, well, for two reasons. Number one, you don't necessarily want to have the strip row, lack of a well, or red light district, whatever you want to call it, because it's so dependent on one use. But then, number two, in terms of the diversity of the industrial base for the village, we have a very limited industrial base. There's only two vacant pieces of property right now, so they're all being utilized for viable, you know, industrial users. And once, but once this ordinance gets passed, there'll be people walking up and down the street, knocking on doors. Knocking on doors, um, but, so I definitely think it's a possibility there, but you don't necessarily want to convert all of your industrial sites focused on one use, in any use, whether it's this use or another, because if something happens to that industry, then suddenly you have a lot more vacant sites that have to be redeveloped. And so, for example, if the federal law suddenly turned, because that's still a possibility, and then suddenly, what else use marijuana gets, gets, you know, delta, delta blow in terms of the ability to operate. So, those are your main numbers, two hundred, if we leave it at five hundred foot that's currently on the ordinance, that's three possible sites right off the bat, three sites right off the bat. With two hundred and fifty, you're looking at six. And with one hundred, you're looking at eight.
You're looking for a suggestion?
Uh, yeah, whether, if five hundred is fine, or...
We can make a decision about this tonight, I don't see any problem with this. Mario, I appreciate all the information about this. Commissioners, do you have any thoughts, Leslie?
Yes, there's one question, one question about, is there an optimum size for general industrial use that, that, you know, we would want to consider in terms of future, in case the marijuana industry goes out, you know?
Well, the issue with that, well, actually, not really, because if you look actually on existing buildings, there are some very, very large facilities in the corridor, but there are also some small ones. So, and you actually, and actually, I think that's very good, because as a business gets growing, you know, they want, if it's a machine shop, just get started, lack of a better explanation. You know, they might be a one-man operation, two-man operation, but as it grows, they have the ability to grow into the site. And then, um, but also based on the industry itself. So like how much they actually want to need, they need in terms of their square footage. And also because, you know, then you start getting more into market forces, you don't necessarily want to get it too much. And I think that's one of the reasons why the village has, doesn't necessarily have minimum lot width and lot area requirements for the industrial area to allow for some...
Have flexibility.
Flexibility for a startup business, someone that's in a garage at their house that wants to move into their first
Right.
site, off-site facility, and then some of this, what you expect. And then actually, you know, when it comes to adult use marijuana, it's a little more unique too, because in the lots for the micro business, which is the intent of having smaller people, for lack of a better word, smaller facilities, there would be more of an entry-level type of facility, not somewhere growing fifteen hundred plants right away.
A hundred feet.
Yeah.
You say a hundred?
Yeah.
Kelsey, what say you?
So my question before Mario was kind of answered, is just like, why do we care about a facilities buffer? And I think the, what the answer I got was just that we don't want to allow a certain area to be dominated by a certain business. Is there, are there any other buffers in the village? Or we're just concerned about this one saving over and then potentially going away?
The only other buffers you actually have are for the adult uses, strict adult uses such as strict loans, which are constitutionally protected form of activity. So, um, yeah, then there is none, but once again, state, Supreme, extra Supreme Court precedent states that a buffer is appropriate for these type of uses. So it's been, well, it's been documented in case law.
That's good to know. I guess, I have a little bit of Jack under the, to allow the bullets, because I would like to see something in a building versus nothing. I think that I would be, I mean, maybe with that small buffer, that one's gonna be manipulated anyway, with changing lot lines, but...
Yeah, it might, but it's one of those things that, as someone comes in, you know, a lot split, number one, at a minimum would be a, um...
Justin's here.
Other standards for...
It's Danny.
My daily...
Also do a jerk!
There's pizza buddy, there's pizza if you want some.
And then, basically, with a hundred-foot change, that would, you're basically looking at a facility in every other building is what how it turns out.
So that would be, I would go a hundred feet as well.
Commissioner Bama?
A hundred feet.
All right, any comments?
No.
Okay. Can I, if you want, I can hang on, like, I'll get to you when we come to you.
What is it?
I'm just, I'm trying to picture in my mind, because they're pretty wide lots. I don't think there's any hundred-foot lots out there, but there might be one.
Hundred and thirty exist, narrowest.
And people are gonna be asking, I'm trying to put in my mind, they said, "I'm asking for lot splits," because we don't have a minimum requirement now. So they're gonna try to split things up so they can extra the... I'm just trying to put everything in my mind, so I'm okay with a hundred feet. I'm gonna go ahead and draw it out, and I'm okay with a hundred feet.
Commissioner Leslie?
Sounds like a plan to me, fifty.
So Justin, we're talking about the options that we've been working on, and we're looking at section C, and we're talking about item three, which talks about the facilities buffer zone in the industrial corridor over there in the southeast part of the village. And Mario just threw five hundred feet in there as a strong reason. And he says the five hundred feet would allow three to five sites to be located in that industrial corridor. If we reduce it to two and fifty, there could be as many as six sites over there. If we reduce it to a hundred, Mario, refresh my mind, you said there was eleven?
About eight.
Eight sites.
Eight, possibly.
And if we had no buffer, that would produce approximately eleven?
Uh, I don't know, there'd be, then every parcel could be, could be utilized to have marijuana.
So, we were just taking a poll to see what the various commissioners thought about what that buffer should be on that paragraph, and Jack started off by saying a hundred. And everybody else seems to follow suit. Do you have an opinion?
This is one of those things that I thought about last, you know, it's one of the last things. Because if I remember right, most of the lots are just about about a hundred and fifty, right? About a hundred and...
Most, most of them are actually around two forty to two hundred. The smallest one is about one thirty, I believe. So that's why, with, based on the current configuration, you'd be looking at, at a minimum, every other business, every other building potentially being a marijuana facility. In its current configuration.
So Jack, unless I'm wrong, if you say a hundred-foot buffer, basically you can't locate next door. Is that, is that about, is that about the gist of it?
If you have to have a, if you have to have a buffer, the smallest buffer is what I'd go for. I don't think you should have a buffer.
Well, you know, I was gonna ask that as a point, I mean, you know, does a buffer, does it buy anything? Is it, is there any value in it?
You have three toll shops within a hundred feet of each other, right now. I mean, you know...
They don't care about that. I don't think that makes any difference. I, I think that what Mario alluded to is we're, we're trying to prevent creating a red light district, you know? And does that matter? I mean, I, you know...
Well, I think it makes some sense in terms of, you know, not, um, depriving other businesses from opportunities, especially if market forces should change. We don't want everything concentrated in one industry, and then the industry, you know, changes too much. And then that's going to potentially have a negative impact. So I think, um, having a buffer helps maintain a certain balance there. Plus, it keeps it from becoming a concentrated district that, for adult use, that's the standard that is used, that's applied for alcohol and for the other types of adult use, so it's consistent, correct?
And I, right, and I would think that, um, in terms of, and this will be Bob's opinion, more, would weigh more heavily, obviously, as the attorney, but I would think it would be more defensible position, because our justification for a buffer of any kind would be to ensure a diversity of the marketplace and industrial district. To not be, to not be dominated by one industry, so...
Would you be willing to go along with a hundred feet, Justin?
Yes, I think I would too.
Can I play that as an advocate, just for Mario? Because I love that song by Mario. So, 450 Glasby opens up, they get approved, they put their application in, they have a dispensary. And you just killed the value of a property next door.
Depends, well, uh, depends on the, on the market, and if you already have an existing viable use, um...
Well, my vacant lot next door.
Oh, right. I think, you know, I'm not sure that that's something, yeah. But I don't, I don't know if market forces are necessarily something that's, needs to be considered when it comes from a zoning standpoint. Because I do know, then when it comes to the other type of adult uses that I, that I reference, I have, we, other communities, you can create buffers, create districts in a location, and if there's one, if there's only one site, you only need to have one. You only need to have one location that could meet your buffer in your community. And if it's occupied by a business that doesn't want to move, doesn't want to leave, then, you know, we're not held responsible for the bakeries and the real estate market. Every property, in theory, has, has a, has a price it's willing to sell, and if that's how the market works, that's how the market works. Those bakeries we're not, say, beholden to.
So Mo, the essence of your question is, is that the, the property next to 450 Glasby is a vacant lot?
Yes.
And so now, as the owner of that vacant lot, you've now lost the opportunity to be able to develop a recreational or adult-use marijuana facility on that property?
Just something to think about.
Yeah, it's also when it comes eventually, when we get to the selection process.
People are gonna be suing people.
Right, exactly. Some of them just do it, just do it.
It's just something to keep in the back of your mind. It can go either way. Now we've taken the value away because we made it too big a buffer. Now we've taken the value away because there's no buffering. You don't know. People are gonna sue, people are gonna sue.
I think you have a great point, though. It's kind of, it's gonna be a race, whoever gets that first property, then every other one doesn't have the value of being developed into it, so... It's definitely a big legal risk, I think.
Hundred feet.
Although if only a hundred feet, if it's a two-hundred feet, you split your lot, and a hundred feet is next the neighbor, this hundred and fifty feet is not, right?
So sue us and the person next door.
Yeah. And I do think you, while it's always, especially with this issue, it's important to factor in the eventual probabilities of defensibility. In the end, as the planning commission, you want to focus on the zoning issues. And what you think is a good zoning standpoint for, this is why we're regulating the use, this is why we're doing it that way. And so, in this case, I think it is a defensible, from a zoning standpoint, that we're asking for a hundred-foot buffer, because we want to make sure there's diversification of the industrial marketplace. So as long as that's your, that's a defensible position, at least in my opinion, as a planner, then I think that's something that you can hold onto, in terms of, you know, this is what we want of this, to that point.
All right, so it sounds like we're agreed that we'd like that to be a hundred feet, Mario. All right, very good, carry on, please.
Moving on, uh, the next and costing the most, or just other, uh, something changes on page three, paragraph D9. You asked about, you asked about certificative occupancy, and whether that be another potential tool, lack of a better word, for the village manager in terms of the ability to, um, ensure compliance for all these facilities with, uh, um, all, not only zoning laws, but all of the ordinances. So, paragraph nine, I changed that to revocation of certificative occupancy and/or suspension of special land use. And kept it in the same paragraph, because this would be an activity that could be chosen by the village manager. And so now, the reason why it's revoked for certificative occupancy is then if they just need to re-establish it, then they just go through the normal certificative occupancy process, which typically involves inspections, building mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and zoning compliance. And as long as they do those administratively, then they can get their CFO back. And revoking the CFO is, is something that, you know, it's something that way, it directly affects the business. They can't have people in there, they can't be operating. That typically is something, personally, I really like that too. I wish more people would use it, because it does get people's attention. Simple, sometimes tickets just don't do it. But that also gives him the opportunity, him and her, the opportunity to do, to suspend a special land use, because then that gets to the point where it starts a process to eventually come to you, in which the, if, a certificative occupancy is for, all right, I think it's something that can get handled administratively, and I think it's something that can be readily fixed. Whereas if it's special land use, then you're like saying, we can pull your ability to operate in the village completely by taking out the special land use. So there, it's a good, it's a good process, because it's, it's layered. And it's, rather than going right to, all right, we're pulling your permit, you can't ever operate in the village again. It's like, all right, we're pulling your permit because we want your attention to come into compliance, and then therefore, and it's something that, once again, when it comes to this, and everything else, we're treating them no different than any other use. It's the same, the same thing happens with other uses, the probability of doing that. So this is the probability of doing that, for this as well. It's just specifically drawn out in the ordinance, so they can do it.
Okay, I'd like that, thank you, Mario.
And then finally, just a point, uh, to begin our discussion about some of the other things that the council did. When it comes to procedures for the, um, for this typical technical land use, once again, keeping the idea of treating them just like everyone else. Paragraph F says that a marijuana facility should be reviewed and maybe granted approval, under the requirements and procedures of site plan review and special land use. So just like anyone else, they have to go, the procedures for site plan and special land use are listed, and they have to follow the same ones. They have to come to the, to the village calendar, they have to submit everything, and then they... also have to submit, and by referencing that section, they have to include all the kind of information that's for a regular site plan. And then they also, by special land use, they have to comply by all the requirements we've laid out in here, which is basically paragraph E above. So in addition to the normal things for site plan, paragraph 1 through 9 has to be included in the application for a medical facility. And then they just follow the normal procedure as anyone else. So, and then, I think that was it in terms of, other, I was brought up? Oh, one other, go ahead, sorry. Jumping the guys, but in terms of the other discussion, when it comes to things like the selection process, the application, and that sort of, and the checklist, for example, when someone comes and wants to open up a business, that's definitely something that I think probably for this type of use should be done at some point. I don't know if it needs to happen before you schedule a public hearing, because that selection process and that application is more of a village board issue, but I think you could definitely undertake it as recommendations to them. And it could be more, rather than a full ordinance, because I would think Bob would want to be able to draft it, because I, since, once again, not an attorney, I would think he would want to say, all right, because you have opt-out, you opted out, or however they have in the original resolution. Then he'll direct the board to number one, this is the first step you have to do to allow them in. So whether that's revoking the old Sunset, or whether that's just approving a brand-new resolution that says the village opts in, these are ordinances, he'll walk the board through that. And then whether you need separate ordinances at a general law standard in your normal ordinances for the village, he can walk through that. I could help him out with that, in terms of just any expertise he directed me to give him for the medical specifics, but I would, excuse me, adult-use specifics. But in the end, the only thing that might be helpful, I would think, for the, well, one thing that might be helpful for the board, is at some point, you have the discussion, and maybe you have it before, you can have it now, or maybe after the public hearing, when the ordinance is pretty much ready to go, the idea of what would be the selection procedure? Because honestly, that's something that probably we need to look at, other examples, because the only ones I've ever seen do focus on things like site conditions, for example, sewer water taps and that sort of thing, and priority that way. If they want to have some type of benefit, or some type of contribution, personally, walks the line. I don't know if that's possible, but usually, that's why it'd be tied to the land, the time characteristic of the land. Like, for example, you could say, the first priority would be vacant properties, priority number one. So that way, you could say, yeah, we're spurring this bunch of new business, so it's brand-new construction, and brand-new occupation, and you're not losing an existing business. And then maybe number two is occupation of an existing building. So that, existing vacant building. So if there is one already vacant, you're not looking for people to go into a, into the industrial district and ask people to move. But then number three, use of an existing building. Maybe there's someone that...
Ready to do...
Ready to do, ready to, actually, ready to partner, and actually, as far as ones, would be saying, oh, I own this land, let's partner with you in this endeavor, if they so choose, if they want to be associated with it. So that could be one way, in terms of, but I would think, at this point, bullet in this that about the selection process might be good, unless we want to use further research to see how they address that. And then, we could...
That could be part of that.
That could be part of it, at some point. So with regards to next steps, I will make these changes. I can, I have started conversations with Bob, just cursory back and forth about what to point out, so I can forward it to him. And then, I would think, and then at the same time, I can look at the medical, excuse me, fishing municipal league, that's, Michigan Municipal League, draft ordinances that are on-site, so I can do that review, and then ask Bob to do his review, provide you with comments. And then, once you're comfortable, it's a matter of scheduling a public hearing. And I think holding the public hearing would be a key point, because then you'll see, once again, are there going to be 500 people there, having every different opinions, or will there be two people?
All right, then, commissioners, are we comfortable submitting this to Bob Davis for an official legal review? An opinion?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you need a motion and a vote for that?
Well, I don't know, but I'll certainly take one. Mo?
I would like the map, or at least something to give Bob, so he knows where we're talking about, which is really easy to state, so collect and figure it out.
Okay, so Mario, you would include the map with the submission to Bob Davis, please. Are we comfortable in just allowing Mario to make these few changes that we've made, and for this document to be able to be forwarded along with the map to Bob Davis right away?
Yes.
All right, good, I appreciate that. Mario, if you make that so, I appreciate it. And then, going forward, I would always like to be thinking, okay, what's next? What's next? What's next? What's next? And getting us prepared for this as we go forward. We'll have a meeting in the first of November, not first, but the early part of November, where we'll probably talk about this stuff. And, Mo?
Because this is where the time of year gets really crazy.
Yeah, and so I don't want to dawdle on this.
The first meeting of the month is the election day. Two of your planning commissioners won't be here. The second meeting of the month puts us almost Thanksgiving, and you start getting into December and all the holidays. So I don't want to, you guys can definitely go ahead and meet without me, I run a lot of rolls deals. The, we can hear your suggestions by email or something.
Okay, that'd be fine.
And just, Mo, with that in mind, just so you guys know.
So really, I mean, you can't do any...
We can't email a, try to email to everybody here and help to a decision.
But we can get the, to, to a one-way communication.
One-way communication, just email comments, yeah.
Right.
Just a real just caution, you know, we can't...
Yeah, I know, Leslie took me to task one day for that, and I thought, come on, damn, what is this open meetings thing anyway? I mean, I can't even...
Democracy!
I can't even ask a simple question, and I was just...
Because the project needs to know you're addressing a question that they may have an interest in, and they need to know there is an opportunity to discuss it. That's why we have, the agenda is posted, so it's done here.
Yeah, I get it.
Whenever you have a question... You can always direct your question to one person, like myself, or anybody in the administration, and then if you, that information can be disseminated to everyone in that way.
So by the way, it's not a disgrace of law, but, you know, trying to conduct business, too. It's like...
We'll send you to prison.
I know. Make sure it's a federal prison.
Hard time.
But I don't think that can be a very expensive...
I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it, I'm sure. It's a nightmare, but anyway, that's beside the point. But going forward, I would like to be continually focusing on what is our next step. And my goal here is to try to expedite this process to the extent that we can, you know, because I know that the council will be, I mean, when does our 12 months end up?
I think we have it until...
July?
Maybe later than that, yeah.
We've got that long?
Yeah, so we're doing great.
Okay, all right.
We are so on point.
So just to let you guys know, so definitely November 5th, your first meeting is the election day. November 19th is...
We're not meeting in the election day, right?
No, no, we are, at least right now.
You said what?
Mo and Rose just said, go ahead, we've got a subdivision thing.
I'm just making it clear.
Okay.
She said yes, he said no. This idea.
I ain't going to get my comments tomorrow.
We are going to meet on November 5th.
Are.
Yes.
Yes, we are going to meet. Because we have non-adolescent marijuana business to attend to. That's this.
Right. November 19th is the week before Thanksgiving, just for frame of reference. And then December 3rd is that first Tuesday in December.
So we go and meet the 19th.
And then, and then December 17th is actually a week before Christmas.
Now, if you could try and have a public hearing at the goal...
It's up to you, how you'd like to have it. You could have it in any of your days. I know we've focused on the second meeting of the month for our discussion, but that's usually like a workshop issue. If you wanted to have a regular public hearing at your December 3rd meeting...
That's what I'm thinking, only because a lot of people are going to be gone for the holidays.
Right. So December 3rd, to me, seems like, it's a week after Thanksgiving, people would be back with, it's up to you, though. And just in terms of your regularly scheduled meetings, those are the dates, just wanted to run you with that.
So we do a public meeting, a public hearing before this goes to council?
Correct.
Okay. And Vicki, Madam Secretary, do you happen to know how many days' notice do we have to have publication before we have a public hearing?
No.
It's 15.
15 days? I thought that's what I remembered, but I thought, for sure. All right, so we have to, we have to have notification on public that we're holding a public hearing, 15 days prior to our public meeting. So, does somebody have a calendar that can see whether or not we can do a public hearing on the 3rd of December? You should be.
We can definitely do it on the 19th of November. We could do it on the 19th of November, we could do it on the 5th of November, if we were going to be ready for that.
No. No, no, I want to, I want to hear what Bob has to say. I would like to have another meeting with this group prior to going to public hearing, so we are able to review, and maybe we'd even like to have Bob come in.
You will have to decide by the 5th of November if you're going to do it on the 3rd of December.
Correct.
To get your 15 days in. If you wait till the 19th of November, you won't have 15 days.
Yeah, see, that's what I, okay, good, I appreciate that.
So you have to decide on the...
Because technically, in addition to, you have to look at the date of publication, so it's not 15 days prior specifically, and then also the newspaper.
Is it reasonable to expect that on the next meeting that we have, which is on the 5th of November, that Bob would be able to provide us with a legal review? And if he feels compelled, he can come and speak to us.
We can do it in January, get rid of the holidays. We've got plenty of time.
I think what you could do, again, because I think what you could do is get Bob's comments, and then based on Bob's comments, if there's a need for additional reviews and revisions, then that can be done in November and December, and then held in January. Or if, if after Bob's comments, you feel that it's appropriate at that point to get public comments.
I'm with Rose.
I would say we'd wait till after.
I'm with Rose, I agree. For some reason in the back of my mind, I thought that we had a target date at the end of the year to get this done. And so that's why I said we've got to expedite this, and let's hurry and get it done, because we're almost out of time here. But apparently, we're not. So we don't, now the sense of urgency has gone away a bit, and I think that we'd probably do ourselves a favor if we wait until after the first of the year, before we start really coming down to the wire. Would you agree? No? Come on, why?
Because why put off what you're going to do?
I can do it, Jack.
I agree too. I'd like to, if we can, Bob can do his review and provide us his comments, and if they're not excessive in terms of reworking anything...
It's clearly dependent on whether Bob...
Yeah, it does depend on that.
If Bob gets it done in time, schedule a meeting.
You're killing me. You're talking about both sides of your mouth. First, you tell me that Bob Davis can't get anything done in a timely fashion.
No, I didn't say that.
Well, I heard you.
I did too. He said it real low, so the camera wouldn't hear.
Kelsey smiles.
Kelsey's better, she heard it. And then you tell me, let's hurry and get this done. You know, I guess it doesn't matter, we can do it either way.
Let's keep moving.
All right, keep, all right.
I do, I do think it might be reflective on Bob's comments and how extensive they are.
Yeah.
So that way, you can feel comfortable keeping the same things you have, or just slowing it down to allow for his revisions based on his comments.
You're killing. Okay, I'm good with that. Please let Counselor Davis know that we would like his opinion as fast as possible, and our intent is we're going to review this in the first meeting in November. His comments, let me say, review this.
Are we also asking him to attend then?
If he wants, you know, if he wants. I mean, if he...
Can you ask if he can attend planning commission meetings?
I'm pretty sure he can, but personally, I would rather save that for the public hearing.
Thank you.
But if we need him at that meeting, we...
Well, yeah, and I, so is it his discretion?
We'd probably get a certain number of meetings out of my year. I don't really know what our number is. If we needed, we have.
Well, we're not going to know we need him until we're there.
I think we're definitely going to want him at the public hearing.
I get that.
I don't know if you're going to need him on the 5th or not. I think Bob's pretty concise, he's going to give you his review, and you're going to have all your questions answered.
There you go. I hope you're right.
I don't usually lie.
I know, I'm not, I'm not talking about lying, I'm just talking about being correct. We won't invite him to our first meeting in November, and we'll just muddle through the best we can.
Muddle through.
Muddle, I love muddle. All right, any other points? Mario?
Nope.
We have no new business. Mike?
Public comment.
Baby, it is public comment time. Thank you for your patience. The floor is yours.
So Mario and the board, I've probably been 20 municipal hours, maybe 30 throughout the state. And like, what you guys have going on here is amazing, like, everything's like, in line and perfect. The only thing I would consider, like, the 500-foot buffer from schools, churches, all that stuff's perfect, but the 100-foot buffer is fine, it's great, there's no issue with it. But the thing is, say there was no buffer, so take 450, and the other thing I had to remember with Glassby, is almost every business kind of, and they're not put up, you know what I mean, you're not in, trying to think, Muskegon Heights, where the buildings are $6,500, and now they're selling for $300,000, and those are like... You know, most of the building properties in Glassby aren't going to move. But the advantage of no buffer is, for instance, 450 Glassby, so 450 Glassby's an awesome building. That building gets approved. Okay, so that building gets approved. And this qualifies as an open lot next door, which is not good for the open lot next door. And I know what you guys are saying, well, what if there's too many medical marijuana facilities? Okay, so, don't take that into consideration. So, if there's no buffer, the lot next door qualifies, they're going to build a minimum of a $20,000 square foot building on that property if it's a lot. So that's a minimum of $1 million building on that property. So if the medical marijuana facility fails, you still have a brand-new $1 million building on that property that a machine shop could build into a crossfit, and you're still going to have tax revenue from that building. And it's, you know what I mean, they're going to build a, it's going to be new construction, it's not building anywhere.
Vacant properties still pay taxes.
What's that?
Vacant properties still pay taxes.
No, no, but it would be better to have a $2 million building on the pizza vacant property.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're right, vacant properties still pay taxes.
I mean, that's the only issue I see in everything you guys have going on here. Everything else is amazing. It would be something to consider with the buffer, because you're not going to end up with a red light district there. I'm not outdoors. Like, those businesses aren't moving, there's only maybe four pieces of property that are even eligible in there. You know, obviously, some, like you said, there are going to be partnerships and stuff like that, some people are going to change, but for the most part, I mean, it's a really nice industrial. It's not Muskegon Heights.
All right, thanks, Mike, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Mario, any consultant comments from you?
No.
Madam Secretary, any administrative comments from you? How'd you like this?
Well, it's fun.
Need work here, don't you?
Make sure you're not tearing it up there.
Okay, Commissioner comments. Ms. Leslie?
How do you know?
I'm going to go over on the table, buddy, I'll start with you.
All right. Actually, I just want to say, I've been serving on the commission now, this is, I think next month will be a year, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners, I've learned a lot of great stuff, and I love to learn, and I just want to say it's great to be part of the team. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Thank you very much, Leslie, I think you bring a lot to this group, I'm very grateful for your service.
I am so glad, I know the open meetings are-
I am too.
It's my time, that's my thing.
I know, here you do, I appreciate your peaking on my toes. Madam Mo?
Happy Halloween.
Yeah.
Best, oh, I'm going to get to that. Best holiday ever. Don't forget to vote. Kelsey's going to give us, Justin?
Yes.
Kelsey's going to give us a new planning commissioner in March, and we're going to give him or her your seat.
Why?
Because she's pregnant, so when she has that baby, you're on. So congratulations, Kelsey.
Congratulations.
And something I want everybody to just think about when we're talking about Gillespie Street, we have zoned a whole bunch of property law for marijuana use on a street that is going to get all the northbound traffic next year. I'm not saying it's going to, I don't know that anybody's going to want to open, if I want to do some construction, but it's real bad timing, because that's where, that's where everybody's going, that's where we're putting all the traffic, because of Gillespie.
That's for, yeah.
It's really bad for dispensary, really, really bad for dispensary, just keep that in mind. And that's it.
All right, Commissioner Bingham?
Well, there's been no ZVA meetings.
Okay.
Not scheduled that I know of. And happy Halloween, everybody.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Justin?
Sorry for my tardiness today, I really apologize. That's what mad homework does for you, and the stresses of a middle schooler, so I apologize for that, but other than that, I have no comment.
Good to have you here, we missed you. Thank you. There is pizza over there if you want, Bob brought pizza. Commissioner Kelsey?
So, I am part of the Open County Municipal Law Committee, I'm the vice chair, and we're looking at doing a seminar on things that we've been discussing.
Say yeah.
We're looking at doing a seminar on adult use marijuana.
Okay.
Just for other Open County lawyers, bringing up speed on what's going on, and I wanted to know if this group would have any objections to me kind of sharing our experience and our drafting process with the best part of that seminar.
Are we legally able to do that? This is public, it's public, I mean, I can't think-
I don't think we'd make them for you, but they could.
Yeah, no.
Oh, that's amazing.
I don't know if you'd like to invite a lot of attorney organization to go through the, to be very thorough, that's what it is.
Yeah, I won't reflect any of their comments back to you, just to save us the honeymoon. So, we're doing, so.
A lot of big stuff.
So, that'd be great.
I think that, Jack? Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah, all right. I don't, I don't think anyone's got any problem with that, I have, nobody voiced any concerns, did it valid?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good. Anything else, Kelsey?
No.
Commissioner, Jack?
Well, we talked a little bit about Beaumont.
When? I'm not sure I know which-
Beaumont filed their appeal at 4:09 on Monday, they were going back in front of the state with the mediator to find out why the Health and Human Services gave it a need in Oxford, and because of limited access, then they take it away and don't grant it for the same reason that there's not enough people there. So, we've got John Riley who's looking into it, Senator Baer is looking into it, even I filed a complaint all the way up to Leimer's office, and Health and Human Services has our complaint in there also. Last planning commission meeting, we did the Mandarin West Lake, there's a 70-home development on Dunlap, right next to the township mall, the final phase of Waterston. Go up on Davison Lake Road or East Drainer Road, you'll see that the county is almost complete, ditching, vision line clearing, and the township bought, I believe it's seven tons of gravel, put down on those two roads. Number one, East Drainer is going to be a lot of traffic on there with the construction, and Davison Lake Road was washing right out, so those are the two things that-
Okay? Is that good?
We did hear, you'll notice the work with Consumers Energy.
I was, that was going to be a quick one.
They're preceding the work in March, a lot of the utility companies are moving their facilities, or, that's a gas regulator, it was in the road right away, so they moved it out of the road right away to a lot they owned, and instead of burying it, they're going to put a building around it, so that way-
Figured it'd be the case.
It's easier-
Permanent?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, okay.
So that's being done, but you're going to have lane closures on 24 all the way up till a year from now.
2042.
Yeah, 2042. Because, like AT&amp;T, they have fiber lines that run right almost next to the curb, well,